Good evening, welcome to Speedway Town Council Meeting. I called the order at 7:00 PM, our first meeting of April 8th, 2019, to order here this evening. Thank you for joining us. My name is Irene Fisher, I'm President of Speedway Town Council. In attendance this evening, to my right, I have Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my left, I have Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening Speedway.
And here representing our Council for Attorney Mitch Ray.
Good evening.
At this time, if everyone will stand, we'll start with the pledge.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the approvals for the minutes for our town council meeting for March 11th, 2019. Any corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes have been approved. Next is the Speedway School Students Art Project.
If I can get my thing to stay up, there we go. On the famous words of Jacob Blaisdell, "Good evening Speedway." My name is Alex Weismiller, President of the Speedway Arts Advisory Council. Thank you all so very much for having us here tonight. I'm very excited to share with you this exciting project that we've all been working together on, but first I want to recognize and thank some of the folks who have been working very hard with us. To start out, I'd like to recognize Elizabeth Glover, owner and operator and force to be reckoned with of Charlie Brown's. If you know Speedway and frequent her establishment, then you know how involved she is, not just with our community, but with our schools. She has employed hundreds upon hundreds of students, instilling the very hard work and sense of community in them that is also in her. It is an honor to work alongside Liz, and having her help to back this project is an even greater one. Liz, thank you so very much for everything that you do for our community. Next, I'd like to introduce and thank our awesome Speedway students Carol and Harry. The vision they have is extraordinary, and their continuous hard work on this project over the last several months has left me utterly floored. I am very excited for what they have and are about to show you. You guys, I'm so very, very proud of you. I'd also like to thank our member artist, Odwin Newman. Unfortunately, he could not attend this evening. He has been working very hard with Carol and Harry to make their dream and their vision a reality. His talent and experience combined with that of Harry and Carol will undoubtedly show. I'd also like to thank and welcome our Assistant Superintendent John Disney, Junior High Principal Rick Roseborough, and Assistant Principal Shane Grove for being here and just for their support. Thank you all for being here. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to welcome an outstanding Speedway teacher, Mrs. Sarah Ackerman, to the podium. Before we get started, I just want to thank her for her outstanding service, her vision, and her commitment to our students. It is because of her leadership that we are standing here today, and her commitment to our students. It is because of her leadership that, sorry, backing up, sorry, we are reminded of, for years to come, which we will be walking past Charlie Brown's and see the mural that we're going to be talking about today. Mrs. Ackerman, your dedication to our students, your family, and our community is not taken for granted. Without further ado, Mrs. Ackerman, take it away.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah Ackerman. I am a junior high school and high school teacher. What I teach is business and information technology, but also a course called Innovations. And what Innovations is, it's a project-based class where students come in and they find out what they're passionate on, and they try to figure out something with that passion that they can work to help develop the community and themselves to be something that is impactful for them. So, I had the pleasure of working with Carol two years ago, and this is my first year with Harry, and I'm not going to steal their thunder, but what they have come to and what they want to do is exactly what embodies this class. This is 100% what we are meant to do with it, just to see the excitement and the passion that they have, and also the ability to follow through with it with their dedication is great. So, without further ado, Harry and Carol.
Hi, my name's Harry. I'm a student from Miss Ackerman's class, Innovations class.
There's a camera right there.
First of all, I'd like to tell you that art is a way of using your imagination to express your feelings that you want other people to see, or like a way to share ideas. And relating to my project, I'm trying to express feeling, the culture of Speedway, I'm trying to express the culture of Speedway, and how it's like just describing our town. And this details all the things people from far who want to learn about Speedway. And for me, it's a way to use my talent for good and help me increase my range and experience in art. And I'll explain what my project is. So, my project is about the Indy, up here is the Indy 500, which we're mostly known for. And the track was built, there's some info about some history of Speedway where the track was built in 1909 by the founding fathers, and you can see some of the generations of the cars look like, and some names that we might know, and the nickname, some other info about the milk where the racing drink, after you win. And that was started by Lewis Meyer, and his name's in the bottle. And on this side, the schools and names of the founding fathers, Carl G. Fisher, James A. Allison, Frank H. Wheeler, Arthur Newby, and there's another info about the goals of the founding fathers, how they wanted to create a city without horses, that's why all this started. And another part is the Thomas Bureau was created in 1926, and the first town marshal was Thomas Love. And this is, this is like the transition into the movement between the sister cities and Montague and Italy, and then we moved into the high school, where the junior high school and the high school, and where the, we won the state championship in softball last year, and we also won a tournament in soccer last year also, and the choir Golden Division this year that we got. And this is just like the main thing, racing, Speedway, and the flag and the founding fathers.
Good job, man.
Very well done.
Very good.
So what he's hoping with this is that we will be able to paint a mural of this 10 feet tall to 20 feet long on the side of the south wall of Charlie Brown's, where he can, where this can be something that goes up and then also can be added to. We've got full support from Liz and her family, and it's just something that we think will bring a lot of people to Speedway, but also while they're here, they'll be able to partake in the history of Speedway, learn a little bit of something, while also having it be something that connects our schools to the community as well, even more than what they are. Do you have questions on this?
So when you say the south wall, is that inside the restaurant then?
Outside.
Outside, okay.
Outside the restaurant, the wall that's facing where you go to Latte was.
Got it, okay.
So the way that he's going to have it, it will be on four quadrants, so four boards that will be painted on the boards, and then they'll be silicone together and then sealed all together, and then placed up on the wall.
Very well done.
So, I had the opportunity to attend the last arts meeting and saw this, which is terrific work. Congratulations, Harry. And I know there's some other things will be on the front of Charlie Brown's, and I have a feeling Carol might be.
Yeah, Carol, go ahead and speak up, come up here to the podium. Share a little bit about what you've got.
So, this is, the basic point of the project is to put all the departments in that high school, for example, the math department, the art department, the history department, and represent them in race cars with a spark plug driving them, and I think that the students' contribu- contribution? Contribution, whoa. Contribution to actually drawing and putting the design into it shows not only what they've learned, but also shows their creativity through the car.
So each car will have 10 cars, each represented in each district, sorry, each department of Speedway High School. So the art department will have things obviously that is more artsy related, history department will have things that is related to history and so on and so on. As Greg calls, like Carol said, they'll be working with the students, she's got a whole team of students that are going to be working with her to create these cars individually. So you've got student contribution, but then also you've got the department heads and the teachers that they're going to be working with to figure out what they would like on the car. And then the cars will be on the wall on the front of Charlie Brown's, leading, turning the corner into Harry's track.
Literally racing around the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, but the, first of all, just some comments on my end. I think this is fantastic. I love student art, because when we look at Harry and Carol in years to come, their artistic abilities will just continue to grow. So it's great to see this at this level, and I know it will continue to grow, but this particular car sign reminds me of when I was about the same age, and you would see these signs come up, and I'm seeing heads nod in the audience, and I'm sure several people know what I'm talking about. We used to have those type of signs hanging from sign poles that it would be past winners of the 500s, most notably the notariable, or the, those that had won multiple races. And this kind of reminds me of that, so it's bringing a little more history in addition to what has already been done with the four quadrants, so it's really neat.
I will also mention that on the mural on each side, one side will have the police department symbol, and then the other side will have the fire department symbol as well.
I think it's really neat that you've got, you know, the high school and the kids getting involved. I remember when I was a kid, when I was a very little kid, it might have been, you know, Gary, Gary was probably high school age, about the time when the fire hydrant was invented.
Easy now.
They used to decorate the fire hydrants. And so, and it's really cool to see this come about, so, nice work.
Well, I mean, it's, so this, I'm just so very proud of our students. They're just, they're so extremely talented, and I've told them this before, they're probably getting tired of hearing me say it, but I'm not even good at drawing a stick figure. And, you know, these students, they have been working so very hard on this, day and night, probably, what, you spent probably a lot of your time during spring break doing this, right? You know, when I was his age, I was outside fishing and also playing video games. Probably more, I still do that.
We still do that.
I still do that. So, but, and again, Mrs. Ackerman, like she has just been a driving force in this, and, you know, our Speedway teachers, in my opinion, don't get enough credit. I mean, our schools get all the credit we have, they get a lot of awards, but teachers, not just Speedway's teachers, but teachers all over the United States, they're very important, and what she's doing, these two students, they're going to remember this for the rest of their lives.
Well, the other part that's really cool about it is bringing in other departments that are not necessarily in our department.
Right.
And so it's just like business where you have these different departments in a company that ultimately have to work together to serve, and that's kind of what you're doing here, so it's really cool. Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else to add?
What we get to do every day, that's what, it's our job so awesome. So, but when you see student lights like that come on, it just makes your job even better.
Yeah.
Great.
Any more questions for us?
No, thank you. Nice job, Terry and Carol.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is Resolution 2019-3. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the environmental insurance funds to the general funds, liability insurance funds to general funds. Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure how to transition from art project to the rest of this agenda, but we'll just be boring and business-like, I guess. Yeah, so unfortunately, Monty isn't here to talk a little bit more about it, but this is, some funds had been set aside, I guess, a while ago, they were related to our wastewater plant, they'd been sent aside for potential environmental liability that would need to be handled, and Monty identified the funds and recognized that after doing some digging that that liability had expired and we no longer needed to have those funds sitting there. We were going to just move it over, but our wonderful attorney, Bob Clutter, advised that we should actually have a resolution, you can't just move it over. So this is a resolution to do that, so we can move it over to the general fund where they can be used for general government purposes. We'd appreciate your approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve Resolution 2019-03.
Second.
I have a first and a second on 2019-3. At this time, we'll take any comments from the audience. Seeing none, any comments from counselors? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving Resolution 2019-3, say aye.
Aye.
Those approved, approved, three, zero. Next is Resolution 2019-4. This is a resolution of the Town of Speedway, Indiana, approval, the statement of benefits for real and personal property tax abatement, for property located within the Town of Speedway.
Good evening. Yes, this resolution is a second step in a tax abatement process. We're excited about this investment by Allison Transmission for a new vehicle environmental testing facility. This would be a real property investment of about $16.3 million, and additional equipment of $18.2 million. Going through all the processes, we worked closely with Indianapolis, which is how this incentive process works, and Marion County, they were offered a real and personal property tax abatement, what we call the traditional scales, which are attached in the resolution, which is a sliding scale, we technically call this a tax phase in, not a tax abatement. So, what this resolution does is two things. This will, because this is entirely in Speedway, the town limits of Speedway, and it's within our TIF district, this acknowledges from the fiscal body that we're okay providing the tax abatement, even though it is in our TIF district, we understand that and we're okay with it. The second one is the town council authorizing the SB1, and there's two of them, because there's a real and a personal properties, statement of benefits. Statement of benefits is what Allison Transmission is committing to, that will be the check and balance to their yearly compliance. So, it's basically saying this is what the investment will be, this is the investment number, the new jobs created, the jobs retained. A little bit about the project, where this is a new facility that we're building on their current footprint. It will be an ability for them to test their products and allow others to come in, test different environments, you know, with extreme temperatures, extreme conditions. It's my understanding there's only a few of these in the country, with only a couple in the Midwest. So this is an exciting addition to Allison's footprint. It continues to have Speedway at the forefront of automotive innovation, and we fully endorse this.
President Fisher, I move that we approve Resolution 2019-4. Second.
I have a first and a second on Resolution 2019-4. At this time, we'll take comments from the public. Seeing none, any comments from counselors?
Just want to make the comment that we are so blessed to have Allison Transmission start our community and remain in our community, and be continued to, just continue to invest in our community. It's interesting that the students that presented the art program, to start with, one of those four names that founded this town and into the facilities was James A. Allison, the namesake of Allison Transmission, amongst five or six other major companies that are all still running. And as a kid that I was growing up in this community, went on to college, some of my college monies were made because my father's company did work at Allison, and, you know, we were able to have bread on the table, and literally, there are tens of thousands of people that have that opportunity, and they're a great partner. They're investing now, they want to invest more as time goes on, they've said that forever since they bought themselves away from General Motors, and have done nothing but do those same things all these years, and we're just really blessed to have them, so I couldn't say enough, and I'll stop there.
I agree with those comments. Jeff, anything?
One additional note, just for process reasons, this started down at the Metropolitan Development Commission, it now comes to the Speedway Town Council, and then it'll be completed at the Metropolitan Development Commission as well.
With that said, I will go ahead and take a vote, Resolution 2019-4. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, opposed, approved, three, zero. Next is Ordinance 1316. This is amendment to Ordinance Number 1313, which is 2019 salary ordinance. Jacob?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So this makes three adjustments to the 2019 salary ordinance. It adds, being, adds three employees all to the water department. One is a part-time meter reader to help offset some of the meter reading hours that our full-time staff is spending, and then two are for additional surface water operators, actually I should clarify, just general operators. We're bringing them on, though, because they do have experience with surface water operations, which we're getting ready to switch over to here in April. During the budget process, we had talked about adding an additional operator, just because of the demands of operating a surface water plant, and some of the restrictions in having a certified operator on site 24 hours a day as the plant is operating. By my error, it didn't make it into the salary ordinance, which is probably the more important part. Between then and now, we also lost our superintendent, who was one of those certified operators at the time, so as we're making this adjustment, we wanted to go ahead and add to, since we can't just add them at will, we do need to make an adjustment in salary ordinance, so I would ask for your approval of that tonight.
Madam President, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 1316.
Second.
I have a first and a second for Ordinance 1316. At this time, we'll take public comments. Seeing none, we'll go, any questions from counselors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 1316, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 1316 approved, three, zero. Next, our request for road closure for Porch Party. This is a dead end of Meyer Street for May 3rd from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
I'll take it. They weren't able to make the meeting tonight, so there's a dead end of Meyer Street, an individual there approached me asking if they could close it for the porch parties, as they're called, it's kind of a block party slash porch party, and it just impacts the resident requesting it, the resident across the street who, in the materials, there's a documentation that they approved it, that individual also called me at my office saying that they're supportive of it, and then it also could potentially impact the motor Speedway, because that's, becomes the entrance to one of their parking facilities, but as you also see in your notes, they have a letter from Doug Bowles indicating that that was okay with them, they weren't going to be using that parking lot that day. So they've asked for approval to request that kind of stub that sits between those two houses.
Make a motion that we approve the request for the road closure. Porch Party is presented.
Okay, the first approval of that, I'll second that approval. At this time, we'll take any comments for road closure for Meyer Street. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the closure for Dead End Street Myers for May 3rd, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Approval two, one. Next is a request for alley closure for Rockin' on Main. This is alley between 14th Street and 15th Street from 4:00 PM to midnight.
I'll take that as well. So this was a request at the Redevelopment Commission meeting, asking for the lot that sits between Barbecue and Bourbon and is it Tax, the Tax Building there? So that parking lot that sits there, the Redevelopment Commission approved that, but they would also like to have the alleyway closed that sits just behind that. It's more of a safety and security reason for the event, Rockin' on Main, that would take place in the parking lot, because the parking lot is owned by Redevelopment Commission, they've approved that, the alley is owned by the town, so they're requesting approval to the council tonight.
Make a motion that we approve the request for the alley closure as presented.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. I'll second that approval. This time, we'll take any public comments for the request of alley closure for Rockin' on Main. Seeing no public comments, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the alley closure for Rockin' on Main between 14th and 15th from 4:00 PM to midnight, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Approval two, one. Next is the approval for local roads and bridge matching grant agreement.
Sure, why not? Thank you, Madam President. So this is a very happy announcement that we were able to make last week about winning the matching funds for the community crossroads, what do we call it, the Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund, that the state administers every year. There's a lot of work that goes into that, as we outlined in the press release that went out, it's a lot of great funding that goes into the community. In order to receive those grant funds, we do need to enter into an agreement with the Department of Transportation, and would ask for your approval tonight to go ahead and sign that contract.
Madam President, I move that we approve the local roads and bridges matching grant agreement.
Second.
I have a first and a second for the approval for local roads and bridge matching agreement. Take public comments at this time. Seeing none, we'll take a vote, or questions, I'm sorry, for counselors. Seeing none, we'll take a vote for the approval for local roads and bridge matching grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approve three, zero. Next is the approval for notice of awards with Harding Group for 2019 Road and Sidewalks. That's you also?
Yep, sure, yeah. So this is just the award of those projects along with the grant. Unless Wendell, did you want to come up and talk about it?
We're doing it.
Okay, all right, okay. So, we do need to go ahead and provide notice of approval. Again, it's been a little bit weird this year, because we've historically done the projects, then gotten the grant funding for projects that were completed, they changed the program such that we can't do that anymore, so it kind of runs in a parallel concurrent path. So we're getting the grant awards, and then now we immediately need to go ahead and approve the projects. Harding Group was the low quote, the low bid on this project, so that is who we're recommending we awarded to.
President Fisher, I move that we approve the notice award with the Harding Group as presented. Second.
I have a first and a second for the approval for the Harding Group. Take public comments at this time. Seeing none, any questions from counselors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those approving the approval for notice of awards for Harding Group, 2019 Road and Sidewalks, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approve three, zero. Next is approval for claims and utility adjustments. And we have those presented to us by the Clerk Treasurer, who is not here this evening. I have quite a few from April 5th.
Madam President, I move that we approve the claims as presented. Second.
Okay, I have approval for the claims presented to us from March 9th through April 5th. Take public comments. Seeing none, questions from counselors? Go ahead and take a vote for the approval of claims from March 9th through April 5th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Claims approved, three, zero. Next, we have the adjustments for the same dates.
Make a motion that we approve the billing adjustments as presented by the Clerk Treasurer. Second.
I have a first and a second for the utility adjustment. First and a second for the utility adjustments presented to us from our Clerk Treasurer. Public comments? Seeing none, we'll, any comments from councilors? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving the claims from March 9th through April 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approve three zero. We will now take reports from department heads. We'll start with Tim Grup, Economic Developer.
Good evening again. Few notes for the public. Good things happening alongside with the Allison announcement tonight. I want to mention that the courtyard by Marriott out by the interstate is officially opening Friday, April 12th. We will have a ribbon cutting and a grand opening celebration tentatively scheduled for Thursday, May 2nd. We will get more information out on that as that date gets a little bit closer. But starting April 12th, it will be officially open. We'll be doing a little bit of publicity for that as well coming up this week. Parking in the Willshaw Lot, so the 55 public spots are officially open as well. We have been slowly getting information out to kind of get people used to it. We had a request by some of the business owners that, whose customers will be utilizing that more. We did pass out a whole bunch of these little brochures. We also did a little video on this as well, but hopefully, these are getting passed out to customers and we're just getting people used to that lot being there available. There's a few additions that'll be coming. Signage-wise, we'll be putting a nice public parking sign on Main Street. Take about 30 days to fabricate the sign, get the electric put in. And also, there will be, it will be a ticketed system. The first three hours will be free, you don't have to pull the ticket, but then you do have the option to park there longer for a pay rate over the three hours. But the first three are free. There's 55 public spots, and you can start using them today if you so like. Just go in between the two apartment buildings, and there are signs that mark what's available. But we also have some of these as well, if you'd like to, if anyone liked to grab one to get more information. And we'll continue to push out information as changes happen, as the new system gets put into place. It's just a little bit different with the ticketing system, but we want to make sure the whole intent of the parking is turnover, so the businesses are able to get as many customers as possible. So we're hoping that more people use the three hours and turn it over. 4501 West 16th Street, there's been a lot of activity today. The demolition of the former Jed Logan's building, the building came down today. They're going to be cleaning up the site over the next day or so, taking out some of those brush, overgrown landscaping that has come up there, as well as cleaning up the lot, getting it, get it all set for future use. The billboard will come down, it's, sorry, the, is officially terminated May 1st, and then they have till August to take the billboard down. So that site will be completely cleaned and ready for future redevelopment opportunities after that time. And then also, our Gilman Street project actually received its last approval from the special hearing examiner this evening, and they anticipate mobilizing and hopefully starting construction on, behind DeLara there by the end of the month. So we're excited about that project and feel it's not going to take long to fill that flex space building.
Quick question, Tim, on the parking. With that parking lot open now, has any of the other lots changed?
Nothing else has changed, other than we were a real big thank you as many times as I can to Martha Conkle and Curly. They allowed us to use 11 parking spots in their lot free of charge for about a year and a half to put, permitted for employees of those businesses in that 1500 block. And that made all the difference in the world during this construction time. So that has gone away. We can't thank them enough for allowing us to do that. But beyond that, all the other lots are still functioning as they were prior to. We will eventually, as 1300 block redevelopment happens, we'll have to make adjustments in that block. But in the interim, it's business as usual. We have permit parking in the Bell Lot, and then that corner lot, 1346, is still available for public parking as well. So all I ask is be kind to your neighbors, you know, don't park in front of other people's businesses. And please, if you're going to be there a long time, find some parking a little further away and walk so that we have turnover specifically in that 14 and 1500 block where it's really tight.
Any questions? Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Next is Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. Tomorrow, April 9th, will be the last Public Safety Committee meeting until May. And again, it's open to the public. It'll be at the Brickyard Inn, and, you know, if you have questions or you want to have additional information about the month of May, you're more than welcome to be there. Secondly, Shred It will be April 27th. I know the town's going to put out some additional information. You know, my, and it's from 10 to 1. You know, my usual speech is, it's an opportunity to dispose of things that you really don't want to put in the trash. You know, it's really a security issue. Also, the pharmaceuticals, it amazes me the amount of pharmaceuticals that we get on that day, which kind of saves our water and makes for a good way to dispose. Same with electronics. Not very many people take electronics, but they will take electronics on that day. Lastly, the prosecutor is having a community outreach. Prosecutor Curry will be at the Big Woods April 24th, 12:30 to 1:30. And, you know, he's done this the last few years. It's an opportunity to ask questions about the prosecutor's office. And we've usually had pretty good turnout for that. So that's what I got. You could have done my report if you didn't want to.
Not as well as you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Next is Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Good evening. Just got a couple of things. Last Thursday, we had our final Marion County Fire Chiefs Association meeting. We combined that with the Operations Chiefs, because all Marion County fire departments are participating again, helping us with the track. Of course, I'll be at the, at the Public Safety Meeting tomorrow with Chief Campbell. And then this week, our department is getting to participate in FDIC, which is a convention downtown, Fire Department Instructors Conference. Literally, instructors and firefighters from all over the world are here for the entire week. I was able to go to two workshops today, leadership and management and those sorts of things. All the Marion County departments get their credentials for free, so it doesn't cost us anything, because we all participate in helping with the hot classes. We also have firefighters that signed up for those and are doing those on their own, and guys that are volunteering to help during the conference. So that's really all I have, just getting ready for May, and you guys have a great rest of your week.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works Director Wendell Walters.
Good evening, Council. Some updates on your departments. We'll start with the wastewater department. All the programs announced in the past are in full-blown engineering permitting, whatever the state might be. We have a program, the SCADA Systems, going through an upgrade down there. So we have a task order to be presented to you, to Jacob, and then back to council for approval on that. Operations are going well. The maintenance, we had a couple of issues with some leaks and the boiler system, but as of Friday, those repairs have been made and no report today of any problems. So hopefully, that's done. Rule five application for the Allison project was reviewed and approved by Norm. And the final inspection on the stormwater BMP at the Heritage Crystal Clean was made by code enforcement and Norm also, and they signed off on that project down there after three years. Something like that. We got it completed. So the annual report has been completed and be submitted to you for your review and input. And then on the Street Department, your left turn lane has been installed. It's operational. The crews got it done a few days ahead of time. Good investment, a lot of use already, so we'll get signed off on that. We have an inspection Friday, and then we'll sign off if there's no issues or problems on that. The yard waste operations program will start tomorrow morning, April 9th, and that'll run through the first full week of December. So just everybody look at our website and Facebook, and the rules and regulations still apply over the year, so take advantage of it. The sweeper truck is coming out of maintenance, and it will start running hopefully later this week or next week for sure, start getting things cleaned back up for a few people come to visit. The crews are still pothole patching, sign repairs, all the general maintenance that they do throughout the town. And plus, I think last weekend, we had a little snow and ice event, so we're still battling winter a little bit, too. So thank you to that group. And on your Water Department, we'll have some notices going out. We'll be doing our annual hydrant flushing at the end of the month, and we'll get that noticed out the times and dates that we'll be out doing that. And we've, the valve repairs are reported a month ago in the Cars Edition, Nelson Edition. The crews went through there and got those all replaced and put back together. We had a hit hydrant up at 22nd Suntner last Saturday night. Our crews got there in the meantime before I got full staff there. Our police department officers on the scene helped my crews get on valves and wrenches to start shutting down. So it's a team effort all the way around, so thanks to those guys. Like Jacob said earlier, the surface plant is coming online this week, all the maintenance. We did some testing today. So everything, hopefully by the 15th, we'll get that online. SCADA System Project is on schedule. Test wells at Meadowwood. We have one that went down to 125 feet. We found water between 30 and 65 feet, so they had to do a test on the water to produce and everything. We'll start the second test up by the gazebo in Meadowwood Park. So we'll keep you informed on that information, and that catches up real quick. Jim only gave me 10 minutes, so.
Hey, Wendell, real quick, you had Indianapolis reach out to you for, on Crawfordville Road and having that redone. Have you heard any updates on that?
Their bid is supposed to be completed this month. They are scheduling after the race, is my last conversation with the engineer on that project there. So I think like June the 6th, they should have everything together and they immobilize and start doing their work out here.
Yes. You mentioned potholes. Well done, all winter long. I mean, there were very few times where we had any significant issues compared to the city of Indianapolis.
Thank you.
Just nice job. Our team just works at it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. Next is Parks and Rec, Tammy Smith.
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there plans for any kind of stoplight on Crawfordville Road repaving?
We have a safety study program going on with the engineering staff, with MPO. Once we get that report back, that'll be reviewed. But on the Crawfordville Road project, there's no schedule for any intersection improvements except for crosswalk and some ADA ramping.
Thanks, Walter.
Hello.
Hey, Tammy.
I have a lot tonight. Hopefully, a lot of good things going on in the parks. We've got our summer camps. Registrations are now open for, people can go onto the Speedway Parks and Rec Facebook page. There's a link there to register. They can also go to the town website, but they need to go to the Parks and Recreation tab under the Departments section. On the homepage, the online registration button does not work for our new registration Parks and Rec platform that we're using. We have added a summer swim camp to our camps. We will be holding the free summer swim lessons again in partnership with the school, being able to let us use their pool.
Tammy, can I ask a question there?
Yes.
You were talking about registration, so I had someone, a resident, ask me about young children, like two, three years old. So to register for that, for swimming for that age children, would that go through the school or through?
I will, I'm going to talk about that registration, but we actually don't have them that young.
Anything that young? Okay, thank you.
For that. Yeah, so all the Parks programs, even when we're using the school to, for the facilities, that still goes through our registration, through the Parks registration. So the free swim lessons, in the past, we've held a signup day. You know, we get a nice long line of people coming and, you know, waiting for two hours or more as we go in order, trying to get everybody signed up, determining what level ability their child's at. This year, we're doing things a little bit different. We're actually going to be holding a couple of evaluation days. So instead of coming and standing in a long line to fill out a bunch of paperwork, they will actually bring their child in a suit, they'll sign the waiver at that point, and then my staff will be evaluating them. They will see what ability level they are. We will tell them what level they are, and then they will have a couple of time choices to sign their child up. That should make things go a little more efficiently, because many times, the parent doesn't really know exactly. We give them a description, but they might under-report their ability or over-report their ability, and then that child's actually in the wrong class. In the first couple of days, we're trying to adjust, and they might not be able to accommodate the time, or we might not have the staff to accommodate. We don't want to go over our staff to-child ratio. So there's a lot of elements involved in that. This way, we can get them in the proper ability level that they're at right off the bat. And then from day one, they can start getting good lessons. This will also, we've had numerous times where kids are very proficient swimmers. That's not what the free swim lessons is about. We want those spots for kids who need to learn to swim. That's why we added the summer camp, swim camp, to the camp schedule. Those camps are for fourth through eighth grader, and they must be able to swim relatively well for 25 yards, from one end to the other end of the pool. Doesn't have to be perfect, but if they can get down and, you know, from one end to the other end without struggling or grabbing onto the side, then they can be a part of the camp. Let's see. That's what I have on camps. Does anybody have any questions on that? I am very excited about this new Parks and Rec platform for registration. It is much simpler. I've had some people test it out, and I've got nothing but positive feedback on it. So I think people are going to enjoy it, and it's going to be much more informative and easier to use. In addition to the summer camps, we are adding some additional programming on a trial basis. One of those is a lifeguard certification training, open to the public. A swim technique endurance and strength class. This would be kind of geared up to those kids who are in, on a swim team. They'll have an opportunity to have more swim time during the summer, and if this goes over well, we're hoping to extend it all year round, with the exception of swim season. We're going to have adult learn-to-swim classes, and adult lap swimming, and hopefully, a youth firefighter camp. Yeah, on for one day. We will also, moving on from programs to events, we have Shakespeare in the Park this year, May 30th, 6:00 p.m. at Meadowwood Park at the gazebo. It will be Shakespeare's As You Like It performance by Indy Shakespeare's Traveling Troop, which is part of the Indianapolis Shakespeare Company. So I'm excited about that. Sorry, my mouth is dry. We have our concert lineup done. It will be the four Thursdays in June, as well as July 11th and 18th. We have to kind of work around the St. Chris Festival, and they're having their festival the last weekend of July this year, so we will be having our two concerts, the two middle Thursdays of July. I am still in need of sponsors for the concerts. As I've said in the past, and I want people to understand that these concerts are 100% funded by sponsors. We've had generous donations in the past, and I look forward to hopefully having partners again this year. I would like to thank the EFW Post 1587, Frank T. Strayer Post. They've already sent their sponsorship money in, and I have had confirmations from others that they will be sponsoring. Again, this year, we've had, we've been the recipient of 100 Trees by Carly Maser. The General Assembly, each member of the General Assembly is given 100 trees to give to a public group in order for them to share with the public the importance of planting trees. I still have some available in my office, shag bark hickory and river birch, so if anyone So if anyone is interested, please contact me. You can pick those up in my office this week. Something I'm excited about, we're going to be installing security cameras in our parks. Unfortunately, we've been the victim of vandalism in our bathrooms multiple times. The doors have been kicked in. So the security cameras will be going in this year, hopefully this month. And as an added bonus, there will be Wi-Fi in the parks. So I'm excited about that. I'll be able to do my programming registrations in person right into our new program with having access to Wi-Fi. And public will be able to have access to Wi-Fi as well. And this year, we will be applying for the federal land and water conservation fund grant program for Leonard Park. We found out we can only apply for one park and we chose Leonard because that needed the most improvements that are outlined in our five-year master plan. So we will be moving forward with that. I have a Parks Board meeting next Monday and they will go for the approval on that. Once that's approved, then we'll move forward and have more information for you guys after that. I want to also commend our Speedway schools. I did not know these kids were going to come in and talk about this or Ms. Akerman's innovation class. I was contacted by a student from her class last week, from her classroom, wanting to use the park. And they are coming in Monday to our Parks Board meeting to go over what they're wanting to do. And I was just real impressed with that and loved what they came up with. It's going to be open to anyone, you know, any girls, this is a girl's platform, body positivity. I'm just so impressed with the ideas these kids come up with. But in addition to that, I was also received an email from the Miller family. They had approached the Parks Department last summer to do a bike-a-thon. They wanted to raise money to send soccer balls to Burundi, Africa. They are adopting a son from there. And the Parks Board gave them approval and they held their bike-a-thon. They made over $2,000. They were able to get the soccer balls as well as purchase shoes that are called shoes that grow. So as the kids grow, their feet grow, these shoes can be adjusted to grow with them. But she emailed me to let me know that they still had money left over and they decided finally what they were going to do with it, which was get formula for these babies in Burundi. Because, you know, they're malnutritioned, they don't have formula. These babies are being fed soda. And it struck me that our parks here in Speedway, Indiana, are being used for something that's affecting people on the other side of the world. And I just thought that was really neat. And I wanted to give her son, I believe he's 13, his name's Ansel Miller, credit for that. It was his idea. And I'm just impressed with our Speedway kids. And that's all I got today.
Just nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All your hard work. Next on the agenda is a report from town manager, Jacob.
Thank you, Madam President. Few notes. Governor Holcomb announced that this week is statewide work zone awareness week. We've already had a lot of work going on in Speedway and between, as Wendell mentioned, the pothole patching and of course, we had the work on Crawfordville Road for the left turn lane. We've had crews out and will continue to do so, especially in June when things really start picking up with our community crossings projects as well as the work that Indianapolis will be doing on Crawfordville Road. So just ask folks to be aware and patient as they're driving around, not just the town of Speedway, but also throughout the state of Indiana as work starts to pick up throughout. Back by popular demand, the yard waste pickup program is starting again this week. We've already had some announcements out, but we will be getting crews rolling. And I know that, just one quick note, we get a little bit of fan mail, we'll say, sometimes when that program stops for a while in the December. People kind of want to keep going. Unfortunately, at some point, we have to switch over to winter operations. I just like to remind folks, that's why we have that break period because then we have crews out on the weekends, overnight, that kind of thing. So just trying to manage hours and the time that those crews are working, we have to switch back and forth. But the good news is, we are back to the schedule of doing the yard waste pickup starting this week. Home Helpers Program, we're doing that again this year. And the date for that is April 27th. It'll be that morning, the same day as a shred it day. We do ask for, if you need help with your home, so this is just, this can be yard work, this can be basic painting. We do, we do ask that they be outdoor, outside of the home projects. We don't want people going into folks' homes. But if you need some help, some general assistance, sometimes it's elderly, but anybody with any kind of disability, if you can't go out and handle it, get on a ladder, that kind of thing. We've got a lot of willing volunteers that are, that are interested in helping out. So again, the date on that's April 27th, but please apply for projects by April 12th. You can do that by emailing SpeedwayHomeHelpers@gmail.com. We have the application on our website or you can email that. You can email that address and we will respond with the application. Or if you're interested in volunteering, just give your name, basic contact information. If there's particular projects that you wanted to work on or things you want to do, again, SpeedwayHomeHelpers@gmail.com. Love to hear from you. And then, last but not least, if you've noticed that communication has improved dramatically, there's a lot more information going out. It's not your imagination, it's not because I'm doing a better job at it. We've added Kelly Buck to our team. Kelly is in the audience tonight. Hi, Kelly. So folks can start putting, face with a name. Happy to have her on board and all the hard work that she's doing. And that's all I have.
Questions for Jacob? Next is council members. We'll start with Councilor Gary Rix.
Just a couple of things on, first of all, this evening at the City County Council meeting, Marilyn Feaster announced her retirement. She's, she's not running again for election and she's decided to step away a little bit early. So she'll be done a little bit later in the month. But she let me know in advance and I would, I reserve the, this, this facility, actually, the Public Assembly Room, on Saturday, the 20th of April, to kind of have a thank you to Marilyn. It'll be at 9:30 in the morning on April the 20th here at Town Hall. So the public's invited to that, just to give her a hug. She's definitely a hugger and likes that, which is important these days as I, as I hear on TV. But, but she's, she's done a great job in supporting our community for 20-plus years in different capacities. And I just want to make a mention of that. Second, the Home Helpers is a great program that the town started years ago and it continues. And it certainly encourages not just those who need the help, but those who can offer the help to get involved. I'm sure myself and other councilors will be doing that. And with that, that's all I have to report.
Thanks, Gary. Vice President Jeff Matthews.
I have nothing this evening.
And I have nothing this evening as well, so I adjourned the meeting at 8:00 PM.